Call me to order. Stand for flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from the last meeting, 6:35, public session. Yes. I'll be trying. I apologize. Want me to open up the public hearing? Everyone in.
Some of those monies.
Should you send me anything?
Did we all get?
I think we did.
The posting.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's not only a agenda. What is it?
What?
Why are we?
I can't vote. You're gonna have to open it, Mike, because I can't open this.
Something to do with a federal grant?
Unanticipated revenues.
Why didn't this go through the Grant Review Committee? That's what we have a Grant Review Committee for.
Should we open the public hearing first, Steve, please? Thanks. We're gonna open up the public hearing to expend...
Unanticipated revenues.
Unanticipated revenues for the Summer Summit?
Correct.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. We received an allocation from the State Department of Education to send participants to the Summer Summit in Keene. This is a professional development opportunity that happens, basically, I'm not sure how many summers it's been occurring, but I know for at least the past three or four summers, it's basically, it's the statewide educator summit that's held in Keene. And we receive additional, we receive notification of additional allocation of $5,950 to send up to 10 people to the Summer Summit. That would be considered unanticipated revenue. It's not something that we anticipated for fiscal year '16. Therefore, we're having a public hearing to answer any questions around that professional development opportunity.
Go ahead, Steve.
Why did this not go to the Grant Review Committee? It's listed on the website as a federal grant. So why did this not go to the Grant Review Committee? That's the purpose of the Grant Review Committee. I'll make a motion to table this until this goes to the Grant Review Committee.
I'll second the discussion. My...
Bonnie?
My perception of what the Grant Review Committee was, was to go through all of the grants, but it didn't mean that everything that came to us in a grant had to go through the committee before it came to us. It was so that you could research and review all of the ones that certain board members thought that we would, it would be advantageous for the town to not accept. But I didn't necessarily know that that committee was looking at all the grants going forward without them coming to the board.
Steve?
I was on the SAU website last Thursday at some point. There was nothing on there about a public hearing to accept a federal grant. At some point, whether it was put on Thursday after I was on there, because I went back on on Friday, and it was there. We were never notified of this, and now we're being asked to accept a federal grant, which is the way it's worded on the SAU website, but now Mr. Tursey's saying that it's coming through the New Hampshire Department of Education. So there's clearly, I, well, why is it listed as a federal grant on the SAU website, and now we're being told that it's a state grant? So I have a problem. We never knew about this, so once again, with not knowing about this, this should have gone through the Grant Review Committee, and it has not.
Ralph?
I think it certainly should have been a discussion at the school board level previous to this meeting. And I didn't hear Mr. Tursey say that it was not a federal grant, part of a federal grant.
It's a continuation of one of our federal entitlements that is obviously facilitated through the state.
So the state takes the federal money and disperses it throughout the state?
That's correct.
But it's still a federal grant?
It's part of a federal entitlement. That's correct.
I'd like to withdraw my motion. My second, please.
I will second it. One more discussion. How does this benefit the students, number one? And who are the teachers that are going to be here? What information is your professional growth gonna be diving into? Is it more Common Core curriculum? Or is it something that the school board has decided to go in a direction of? Is it straight from...
I can let everyone know what the strands are. At the Summer Summit, it is early childhood leadership, data literacy in leadership, competency-based education in leadership, community engagement in leadership, STEM leadership, which is science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and co-teaching leadership.
These are federal standards that we need, we here in the state of New Hampshire need to, or we here in the town of Wakefield need to adhere to?
No, these are professional development opportunities around instructional practices and leadership.
Is that how you pay for last year's Summer Summit as well, Michael?
Correct.
Is that the same funding you have left for the Summer Summit?
Yeah, basically what happens is towards the end of the school year, prior to the summer, an allocation will come out for districts to attend the Summer Summit. And it's not, we don't know if that's gonna actually happen, so it's considered unanticipated revenue since the hearing. It's something we've been attending to for a couple of years now.
Okay, I know that last year there was a lot of discussion around the Summer Summit before you guys actually went, but we never actually delved into how we pay for it. So this is, this is kind of an eye-opener for all of us, I'm sure, because we never actually discussed funding last year.
So...
Steve?
I went to the competency-based education seminar last month, and it was, they stressed the importance of how to push that through is through professional development. So, because it's easier to hide through professional development. I know there was a lot of discussion on this last summer, and it was strictly eighty-nine, eighty or ninety percent Common Core. So once again, I just don't, the board should have known this far beyond having a public hearing and knowing what we were going to be accepting federal money prior to the public hearing. And that's why this needs to go through the Grant Review Committee.
Ralph?
Sounds like it's already been accepted, the board hasn't even had a hand in that, and this is a public hearing to expend the monies? Is that right?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Expendment. And you did not tell me who is presenting, who are the people that are teaching, the folks listening to professional growth? I looked it up. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I believe that when the posting went out for the public hearing, that I received a call from you...
Myself, yes.
As well as from Bonnie, and then I sent an email out to the whole board stating that a public hearing would be held this evening regarding unanticipated revenues for federal grants. So you should have received that email, I would say, at least two weeks ago, prior to, right after it went into the paper as a posting. So it was posted appropriately, the board was informed of the hearing. If there were questions, you could have reached out to me on that as well. The way the process works for the unanticipated revenues, to take you back on your question, Ralph, is that we have to have a public hearing to answer any questions from the public, and then the board votes on whether to accept and expend those unanticipated revenues.
Thank you, Michael. Go ahead.
The whole reason for the Grant Review Committee was to remove the mysticism from these grants and to streamline the process, because for a few years now, I've noticed that the time it takes to get from that location from a grant all the way through the end is just way too long. So that was the reason why. Now, at the county level, we started the Grant Review Committee, and it's helping the county commissioners streamline and move the process quicker. How long did we know that this grant was gonna be available? Did we know about this a year ago?
Say, Mary, about three weeks ago?
I can tell you the actual date that we got.
Three to four weeks ago, we received the allocation and the intent to apply. So at that point, it's not, it's not something new, except for the monies themselves, the actual summit itself is something that we've gone to in the past.
This is what, we had proposed as a Grant Review Committee, that this be put into your policies. That way, three weeks ago, the process would have been, you come to the board, you say you apply or that you're gonna get a grant, and you go, it goes to the Grant Review Committee, a report's made, it's given to the, to the school board, so they can make a quick decision that shouldn't take long at all. That would have saved all this time. I get the impression that the school board doesn't have the information needed to make the decision, so that's the reason why the Grant Review Committee was started. But I don't believe that was put into your policies. Is that correct?
No.
Thank you.
Priscilla?
Last year, when you had the Summer Summit, was it paid for by a grant?
Yes.
Was it unanticipated?
Well, it would have been considered unanticipated, but if you recall, we're approaching budgeting different this year, and really marking what our unanticipated and anticipated revenues are, so I'm staying true to that.
And from what I gathered by listening to the discussion, and because there was never a statement at the last meeting that you were going to have a public hearing, that the board, the majority of the board really didn't know that it was even gonna be a public hearing.
Steve?
If this was aware, if this was aware of three weeks ago, why was this not a last meeting? That would have given us a two-week notice that we could research it and find out what's going on. I don't, this needs to go to the Grant Review Committee.
If my notes are right, two weeks ago, or it was after the last board meeting that you put out a notification of a public hearing? What are the assurances that you have to make to the federal government to receive these federal funds?
The ones that you approved for reassignment?
I remember.
Correct. I would say that some of you approved those.
That's right.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you for the clarification.
So it's already been applied for, and we have the allocation? Is that what?
But it hasn't been approved, so...
Okay, so we applied for it, and we haven't approved it, so you guys haven't received any money?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the purpose of a hearing, and the board has the final vote, is to receive and expend those monies.
So the motion on the table is to table this until it goes before the Grant Review Committee?
The actual date of the letter was June 2nd, however, Mr. Tursey did not know what Wakefield's allocation was in that letter, because it was a full SAU, so we had to break it out, and that took a couple of days to have that conversation back and forth with the state. So it wasn't ready for the June 3rd board meeting.
Bonnie?
My email's due the 6th, so I've known since the 6th.
Priscilla? Is this a competitive grant? Did you apply for it?
No.
Is it part of Title I, 2A, or what are those?
2A.
Is it part of 2A?
That's the third Title I.
Title I, professional development.
A part of Title I?
That's the board manager. The, the, the Summer Summit is August 5th through the 7th.
I feel I'm being asked to make that decision.
Not long. However, if the board's not comfortable, then we'll go through the process of vetting it through the Grant Review Committee, and then bring a recommendation, post another public hearing, which we need a full week in the paper to do, which could lead into us not reading that date.
I have the answer as to who is providing this educational opportunity.
Let's see, the early childhood leadership strand is Donna Beagle.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping, not necessarily individual people, what is the, what is the head?
Where's, where's the orders coming from? There are no orders. It's being organized through the Department of Education, and educators that attend the summit sign up for specific strands of interest. And then there's time for the school building level teams to meet and actually plan their year as to what they would like to see happen for professional development and work on specific goals.
Is it Keene?
It's at Keene Stadium. Yeah.
But I do believe it would be important to know where these individuals are from and who they represent.
As well as the specific assurances, because it seems like we lumped some of the assurances together without really knowing what promise is made for what money. And I would really like to know that as a member of the Grant Review Committee.
Then I suggest referring back to several board packets where those assurances were provided to you prior to the approval.
Priscilla? So you got your letter on June 2nd saying that you were gonna get this money? Is that right? When did you actually know you were gonna get it, though? You might have known beforehand that it was a pretty sure thing.
We never know until we actually get it.
But enough to bring it up to the board that this is a possibility.
One of my notes says three to four weeks ago.
Again, maybe I should have anticipated that it would be a problem.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
This discussion is getting old hat. It seems like every time we come to a meeting, it always comes up about federal government, federal taxes, all this stuff. First of all, to make it clear, Common Core was not, was not a federal idea. It was the state governor's ideas across the board, whether you were a Republican governor or a Democratic government. That had nothing to do with it. Second of all, to think we can do without federal assistance is absolutely ridiculous. We need to, we, not to accept federal grants, makes the taxpayers of this town pay twice. I look at it as the money I pay to the federal government is recouped in some ways through these federal grants that helps our faculty and helps our students, and we need to get over it. I don't wanna pay twice for services that I can get from the federal government of taxes I put into the federal government. It needs to stop. I'm done.
Thank you.
You need to swear an oath of office to uphold your state constitution and see how that feels when you sit and ignore your state constitution. Please share that sentiment.
All states have, and we've had this discussion before. I'm done.
So it was applied for, and it was allocated, and now we're just... How, maybe I ask this, and maybe I listen to, how long ago did you guys apply for this? Because, Michael, you're saying it's a continuous, continue from the Title I...
Basically, what happens is Title I monies are repooled at the, you know, this time of the school year, for monies that weren't spent throughout the, throughout the state, and then those monies are reallocated to districts. So clarification on the Grant Review Committee, my understanding is that it would be new grants, it would be competitive grants, as to whether we needed to, if we were going to apply for those grants or not. This is not a competitive grant, this is not a new grant, this is something that has been approved for us to go to in the past, therefore, I'm approaching it as unanticipated revenue on a grant that we've already been utilizing for professional development opportunity in the summer. Pretty straightforward.
Is it as straightforward as the grant that we didn't accept, that didn't be $14,900 something thousand dollar grant that we didn't want last year? Go to the same purpose and the same place and the same teachers and the same...
No, that application would have actually been more detailed than what this is. This is to send 10 people to Keene for three days.
Any question?
Just a statement. Our teachers, the paraeducators as well, are expected to have professional development. We can't afford every single professional development we'd like to go. We are required to go to a year, and the school board has been kind and given us the monies for it. But if you don't allow some of these summits, these bigger professional developments, how are your teachers going to be educated? How are they going to keep growing in their education and developing things for their students? Please think about that.
My own concern is, is want our teachers to bring back to the school and giving back to the kids. That's my concern.
My concern is that you don't trust your teachers to know what is right, what is forthcoming in education, what would be suitable for the students at the school. Please give some thought to trusting people. Everybody is against.
Motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
And make a motion to refuse the federal grant.
All in favor? Oh, we gotta have some...
I will second the motion for brief discussion.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Why couldn't this have been brought to the school board three to four weeks ago? If the note says here that you got this information three to four weeks ago? I think you should have brought it to the school board two weeks ago at the last meeting, instead of waiting until after the meeting and then posting it. Because I know I don't pick up the phone and talk to the other school board members about issues on emails that I received through the SAU email thing. I didn't receive the email, but I'd certainly been on the 6th, and discussed it. I'm disgusted that we knew about it, not we, we knew about it, and it wasn't here two weeks ago. That's what hurts.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any motion to approve sending, to approve the unanticipated funds and to allow our teachers to go to the Summer Summit up to $10,950?
I'll second. Discussion.
Go ahead.
Are we gonna even know what this is all about, or this just gets swept under the rug again?
Bonnie?
Through professional development.
I went online and looked it up and researched it after I received the email, so I came prepared tonight to make a decision.
Steve?
And I'm sorry if you didn't receive the email.
Yeah, exactly. Not all of us were made aware of this situation, and I believe it's the administration's job to notify the board of these things. So once again, I'm requesting what the Summer Summit is all about, the presenters, what foundations or companies they work for. I would like all information presented to the board, like it should have been prior to this evening. But I'm asking for that now, or at some time in the very near future.
Any questions?
Is that an unreasonable, an unreasonable request?
No, Mr. Tursey offered to send us the strands for what they're attending. He's offered to send us all the information, so I don't think there's gonna be a problem with that. I don't know what happened. I received the email, I actually asked a question back to Mr. Tursey when I got the email, and then I went online and looked it all up, so I don't know what happened to everybody's emails on this one. So we have a motion on the table in a second, and I'd like to move the question now.
Point of order.
Go.
Is any of this affiliated with Common Core? None of it? Not, not, one thing in there is Common Core?
There's not a specific strand to Common Core.
Okay, but you're gonna send us all this information?
I'll send you what I have via email, which is set up as an SAU account, as approved by board.
Can you please get somebody to help with the emails that aren't working correctly, please?
Certainly.
Okay, so we're gonna move the question, the motion on the table to approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye. Are, the motion, did you just, was it to expend the money or accept the money?
Bonnie made a motion to approve the Summer Summit funds for $5,950 for 10 teachers to attend. I believe Steve seconded for discussion.
No.
No. Bob. Sorry, Steve asked for discussion.
Thank you.
Priscilla?
Just a comment. When you have a public hearing, the board is supposed to be prepared to take comments from the public. This is more of a discussion amongst board members rather than gathering information and giving it to the public.
Bonnie?
I could answer questions, I didn't have any yet.
They should have been mentioned at the last meeting. They really should have. They should have been mentioned at the last meeting that you were gonna have a public hearing, because some of you didn't even know you were gonna have a public hearing at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now back to the regularly scheduled school board meeting. Minutes of the last meeting from 6:30. Any questions? Bonnie?
Make a correction on page two, under financial reports, 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth line down, if there are items around the school, instead of toe, which two? Do you repeat it or please?
I make a motion to approve the public session minutes of Wednesday, June 3, 2015.
Ralph?
As amended.
Ralph?
I'd like to make an amendment on page three, please.
Okay.
Under the cleanup of the parking lot, where I stated this, I feel there's enough money in the account to move that fell and put stones in, I actually said retention on, retention
in the account to move the fill and put stones in, I actually said retention pond and retention trench.
Rather than stones?
Well, it includes stones, so I mean, I may have said the word stones, but I believe there's.
So how about enough money in the account to put in a retention pond?
To, to remove the fill and install the storm water management methods according to the plan. I don't know about according to the, to the professionals, but that's what I believe according to the plan. And I think that's what I said that, I think.
Anything else?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion, amendments.
Is it?
Okay.
Okay, this is a public comment. Mary?
Yes, on Monday, the field trip to the works was canceled, I'd like to know why, parents were not informed.
Yeah, you know, I got an email on that, Mary, and we did not inform parents, it was not, it wasn't, we could have done a better job of that.
Okay, and what did those students do? Did they watch movies?
Yeah, they watched a couple of movies, they played, it was sixth, seventh, and eighth grade that was scheduled, they played some basketball. We tried to make a fun day because again, they lost out in that PBIS trip, so we tried to make it enjoyable for them.
And it's not gonna be rescheduled?
Working with the works, they get so tight with time, really trying to schedule with them, get a day with them is challenging and then this tight at the end of the year, there isn't time to reschedule that. We did look, we did try.
Okay, what were the movies they watched?
Yeah, there were a couple of movies in there they shouldn't have seen, not, they were PG thirteen, which is appropriate, but they didn't check with me, we haven't had that discussion, that will change.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Toni Gagnon, my son's a first grader here. I'd like to ask about a discussion about reinstating all three second grades. My concerns are that with twenty-four kids in a second grade class, that's too many. I have all kinds of information on statistics about smaller classes, which I'd be happy to read, or I can give it to you to read, but I also have letters from other parents that are concerned about the class sizes and I was hoping we could discuss that.
We can certainly put it on the agenda for discussion, for the next agenda, if you wanna join us.
Sure.
And we can all take a look at it, and if you wanna hand in your correspondence, that's great, we'll make sure everybody gets copies.
Okay.
And we'll be prepared at the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, that was third grade, Steve.
But did she accept? Is that the same?
It's, no, it's a different class now.
Did, we have talked about creating three third grades instead of three second grades, this request is to reconsider that?
To have three third grades and three second grades.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm just concerned that we have more students in the classroom, more people will be sick and more people will be absent and if we have twenty-four kids in the classroom, it'll just be harder to concentrate and work.
Thank you.
Thank you for your insight.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hey, we have a parking lot update, Jim Reins from White Mountain Survey is here, if you could address us.
Good evening, Jim Reins from White Mountain Survey and Engineering, and I've also brought Kevin Ash, who's the licensed land surveyor that's been working on the project. I've got a laser pointed here and I don't wanna do cataract surgery or anything.
You can work.
And I'll let Kevin speak to it, but we, in doing the survey, we've discovered that there's a, a section of the, the property that the school district purchased that, and it's right in this area right here, that the, there is not good title. The, and of course, you wanna build the parking lot from here down to here, so it would be across property that there isn't what would be considered marketable title and before we design any improvements or recommend any improvements be designed there, we would recommend that you work with your counsel to clear up that title. And as far as specifics of how the lot and the gap came about, I can, if you have specific questions, Kevin can probably answer them. I can tell you that in older tax maps, this area right here actually had its own tax map and lot number. We found in doing some research. So it's been something that's been known, there were surveys that went on in this area in the neighborhood by other surveyors, they also showed some concerns about that area. Like I said, if you have specific questions, I'd let Kevin speak to it, he could, he could walk you through the title and some of the issues, if that's the board's pleasure.
Go ahead, Ralph.
My first question is, is there notice of any title search when this property transferred from the previous owners to the school district?
I can't tell you for sure whether or not they had a full title search done. The deed by which the school district acquired that parcel really only describes what I've referred to there as parcel one and two, which is the lower, the southern, most big trees on the strip next to it.
Have you any record of the grantor that gave the district the land? Is there any record of them making tax payments on that parcel three? Do you know if there's any historical records where the taxes have been paid by that?
I haven't dug into all the tax, tax research to figure out who has the best claim to it. I mean, I kinda wanted to present the problem and see how you would like, if you would like us to proceed or you wanna bring it to an attorney and discuss it first. Basically, I mean, both the lot, the school lot and the land to the north that the school acquired years ago, they were owned by one person newly inherited in the first part of the twentieth century and what that parcel one, she conveyed it first, yeah, she conveyed it first in, I think it was nineteen eighteen, so that lot has been a lot since nineteen eighteen. And in nineteen forty-four, she granted the, the land northerly, which became part of the Forest Hills subdivision and the school actually acquired that lot, where the parking lot is now, as described for that subdivision plan, which basically showed this as the boundary, whereas it was a previous survey that showed this as the boundary. So this gap in the middle was kind of created at that point in time with the two different surveys, it was the early seventies, came up with two different versions. And since then, I mean, I'm not sure how it happened, but the deed in this chain of title has always described as parcel one and this parcel two. And now, your previous owner, I forget what her name was, but she had a, she went to the town and basically at that point, the town showed this as a separate tax map number and I don't know how they decided that she owned it, but she went and had the lots merged based on the tax map description and the deed she referenced only refers to, only describes these two parcels, it doesn't describe that one, so. I mean, obviously, the school district probably has the best claim to this title, I'm not suggesting that there's somebody's gonna come out of the woodwork and claim that, you know, they have right to build anything there or anything, but there is a, there is a question there, a plot on the table.
But you just reflected the idea that the previous owner had gone to the town.
Yeah.
And paid taxes on that particular parcel three.
She, she merged the two lots as they were shown on the tax map parcel, whether or not she owned that lot, or whether or not the town actually has the authority to do that because she didn't, or may not have owned it.
I guess the question that I'm asking the answer for is, is was she paying taxes on that particular?
I can't answer that question, that's a long one, and I don't know that, that would clearly be available in the record because, should be, but I'm just worried that there's some confusion between this parcel one and this parcel two and that maybe the town presumed that this was the parcel two and this was, this whole thing was parcel one.
Do you think at any time that the town recognized that parcel three as school district property previously? I mean, do you think that the town had ever represented that jagged bit to be?
I haven't seen that on the tax map.
Okay.
And I know that when the town bought that lot, it was, I mean, the plan very clearly states that it's that straight line across.
From the subdivision for Forest Hills.
Bonnie?
After she had it merged, did the, did the tax pay rate go up on that?
Once again, I haven't researched all the tax records, but.
Yeah, that would.
It's in that story.
Part of the, the thing to be aware of when the voluntary lot merger process, if that's what she used, the only way you can do that legally is, there's two components of it, one, the title has to be held in the exact same name and the other is that it can't violate zoning. So if, if there was a dwelling on each of those properties and your, your zoning ordinance said you can't have two dwellings on one lot, then it can't be merged. So if she didn't have title to it, even if she merged it and the town approved it, it's, it has no validity because if she didn't have title to it, it wasn't in her name to begin with, so it's a, it's, it's just something that there, there are, you know, like Kevin said, I think you, you know, the school district probably has the best claim to it, but it's better to get, get it cleared up now rather than do improvements on it and then if somebody does decide they wanna dig into the school district's pockets, now that you've got investment on it, now you're more committed to paying whatever ransom somebody might come up with.
And this research that we're talking about to, to clear the title, there was not any proposal that you had provided to the school district?
Right, we simply, you know, our, our proposal was to determine the boundaries, which we've done, but not to cure any problems that, that, you know, we discovered in, in the process.
Have you got a ballpark figure what the school board should expect to expend on an issue like this?
I, I honestly don't, I mean, what, it was Bob DeChano's company that became automobile realtors, Bob DeChano, who developed the whole Forest Hill thing. So I mean, if, you know, I know that corporation dissolved in the late seventies, so I don't know who. I don't know that, I don't know if Bob is still alive, I know his daughter is and his, and his son is. So, you know, if you talked, I mean, it could be as simple as making a, reaching out to them and saying, hey, we've got this issue, would you quit claim any interest you have in it and, and that may make it all go away. If they say, no, I'm not comfortable or I don't wanna do that, then the next process would be to acquire a title. And that's a, you know, a process that, you know, you need to have public notice, I think it's sixty days a minimum for, you know, that it gets put in the paper so that people can, can come forward if they think that they have any, any better claim to it than, than the school district.
Do you have to do the quit claim first or can you just do a quiet title?
No, you can just go quiet title. A quit claim would eliminate the need for a quiet title.
Bonnie?
I guess I'm just wondering in your expertise, do you, which one do you feel, I, I know in my opinion which one I, to go, the quickest would be the easiest. Does your company handle that often or is it something we should be going to our legal for?
I mean, it's, it's, it's not something that we run into all the time, but I, you know, coincidentally, I, I know Bob DeChano's daughter very well, yeah, I could, I could reach out to her, I mean, if I were King, I would probably, that would be the first thing I would do is contact them, but I certainly didn't wanna contact them until the board has had a chance to sort of think about this. You may wanna talk to your counsel before we start talking to, you know, anybody who might, who might have a claim to it.
Is there a chance that there was already quit claim given and not registered?
No, I mean, it's hard to know what you don't know. I can't, I can't tell you that that's not a possibility, but I, I forget the, the tax maps when they were hand drawn before you had CAI, you know, Cartographics Associates, that was when we found a copy out of, we purchased John Knight's files and John Knight had a photocopy of an older tax map, I think it was like in two thousand and seven, maybe?
Yeah.
And that, that still was showing it as a separate tax law, so I, it would seem like any quit claim prior to that, or if one existed, I don't know, but it was still being taxed as a separate parcel of land, or it was identified, it may not have been being taxed at all.
I have packets of deeds and plans that I reference on there and I can read those with the board if they wanna share them with your attorney or just look at them themselves. I've numbered these, one through seven, and if you see my parcel three note there, there's basically seven, you know, off to the right, big note.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 thank you.
There's seven paragraphs, so basically seven, seven sections, so each one of these is numbered, matched back, so if somebody really wants to dig into the whole issue and history of it, that would happen.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Maybe we should take the time to find out what the title search reveals, if there was a title search done. Do you remember that, sort of whether or not there was one?
We had, you had your attorneys involved in this whole thing. I think a title search company was going to do it and I believe your attorneys handled that. Is that correct, Steve, am I remembering correctly?
My, my.
So I think maybe if you get ahold of the attorneys, because they've been involved in this, day one, it might be a good place to start, find out what they found out.
The, the other part of that is if you did have, you may have gotten title insurance and if you did, then your title company will pay for this to, to cure this and there'll be no cost to the school district.
Well, that's something we want to check out.
Well, certainly, Mr. Tursi. Are you making notes over there?
Do you want to make a motion about the federal legal?
Yeah, it's, Kevin is just pointing out it's a warranty deed, so probably if somebody's warranting the title, they probably did do a title search.
Yeah.
And it, then it's only a question of whether or not you purchased title insurance. We ran into this in another place in Wakefield and the title company paid to, to cure the title.
I think all we, all we legal is, you wanna know whether or not there was the insurance, the title insurance on it. Wouldn't that go through, would that go through like the real estate agent too, maybe? Would they have that information, quick information? I was asked to be taken away from it when I was selling it, they said, Joe, you need to go away, then I went through Sarah. So, but I can, I can check with these.
Well, shouldn't the school have copies and we should have copies of all the deeds at the SAE office that you can do, you can have someone in the office do a little investigation to see and maybe have someone contact a tax office and find out who's been paying taxes on that parcel of the last hundred years?
Well, it's a seventy-four.
You have everything from the attorney, I think I turned all my stuff over, I'll check.
So someone has to have it somewhere in the office, we just have to dig it up and find it.
Oh, yeah.
Put the sackcloth away.
Before we go to the attorney, just to, because maybe we don't have to.
Right.
But we, we did go to the attorney, so there should already be all that information already at the SAE.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. Ralph? Mr. Tursi?
So it's safe to say, Jim, at this point, until this is cleared up, your services are on hold?
I, I would, that would be my recommendation, if you were asking me for a recommendation, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go ahead and expend, you know, monies to design something that, you know, if, if things went poorly and you didn't end up with that and you needed to design parking coming in from the side, because it's still, it does butt some of your property, it just doesn't butt it where you wanna expand the parking lot. want to expand the parking lot.
Thank you for that. Great news.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jim.
I would, I would like it to be different news because we'd like to design it and move on to the next thing and I'm sure you'd like to construct it. All right? We'll leave, we'll leave you those prints that, that.
Do you have plenty of copies of that stuff?
I have another set of those plans to, to leave those with us.
We have them already.
We have all of those?
I got them made. I don't want to give those to you.
You probably didn't get all that. This stuff will go email.
No, I think we sent.
No, we just got references. I think references to the dates and.
Some, some of the things, I think we emailed some of the stuff to try to help explain it, showing the old tax map and some of the other issues.
Thanks for the update and we'll start looking into it and Mr. Tersey will reach back out to you.
And then, yeah, when you, when you select a direction, let us know and we'll help you in any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who?
As I said.
You good? Oh, yeah. Just thanks to.
I believe they're pulling up the NWA information for review, which is far as the curriculum coordinator is reporting.
Correct. You also have in your packet the information on the FIA, which is what we did at our last CIA meeting, not the last one, a month before. We did the FIA and this, these are the results. And as you can see, one of the data points was last fall and then this spring. So we've made some gains and had a few splits, but on the whole, we're moving it forward. Any questions on that period? Boy? What do you believe the reasoning is for the decrease in some of the stages or some of the aspects of this?
Partly, I think we're fine, we're, we're really clear about what it is that those items are actually assessing. And because we weren't totally clear about it when we first started with Swift and we are now, and now we realize that we have some work to do within those, within those strands.
Also, I think it'd be important is that we are asking different people, so there's maybe different perspectives. We're not, it's not, everybody is asked, they ask for a slice of, you know, parents and classroom teachers and parents, so we're not asking the same people, so they're, they're looking at some different answers.
No, this, this, this FIA is our own internal.
I'm sorry.
The FIT was the last time that we were together and I showed you the FIT data. This is our internal, this is our CIA team. So our, our idea of what should be happening is a lot clearer now and so I think that's what you're seeing.
Okay. Any other questions on that before I move to the NWA? Any other questions on the rest of my report?
Have you had your opportunity to engage the community, to look at or assess the community partnership and the engagement part of that?
Mm-hmm.
When do you see that? When do you get an opportunity to come to these numbers?
So there, excuse me, there are specific questions that refer to each one of these features under this framework. And those specific questions drive these numbers. So the specific question for the family and community partnership is how involved is the community? How many times does the community come and use your services in the building? For instance, is one of the questions. Another one of the questions would be, do you have family membership on our leadership team, on your leadership team? So those things have been addressed this year. So the, the community has come in and used the facilities quite a bit this year and so that's what you're seeing here. That's, that's the actual questions, some of the questions that are teased out in that.
Thank you.
So this is just the, the percentage of, in each of the categories. NWA is a little bit different than some of the other items that we've presented before. And so these are just the percentages of those, of the students that, for each of the grade levels, that fall into the low category, the low average category, the average category, the high average category and the high category for NWA. And at the top, you'll see the percentages of what that is. So low is below the twenty-first percentile and the low average is twenty-one to forty percentile. The average is forty-one to sixty, high average is sixty-one to eighty and high is above the eightieth percentile, eightieth percentile. What's a little bit more, tells a, a little bit more of the story is the actual bar chart here. And that's based on a hundred percent of the classes. So the first column is for grade two in the fall, the second column is grade two in the spring and that follows all the way through to grade eight. So again, it's two columns per grade level. The fall is the first one and then the spring is the second. And both reading and math are represented here.
Hundred different slide.
So that's math. The numbers for reading are, are here, the percentages, and then this is displayed as the bar chart for reading. And you have those in your packet as well.
Yeah, personally, I think the important thing to know here, this gives a great overview of the, the second grade to eighth grade. And you see, you know, great colors and blocks of color indicating groups of students. And I think the important part for us as a building is to not lose sight of where we are, whether we're high or low across the board, but to drill down into these colors. So if we're looking at, you know, fall, the, the spring of seventh grade and looking down at that small block of, you know, about five percent or so, six percent in the red, who are those six kids, well, that six percent of the kids? Who are they? What do we need to do for them? Is that looking at shrinking that orange and red block and making that smaller, increasing that green, yellow, you know, hopefully the blue also, but really drilling down to find out who those students are and what's preventing them from being successful and addressing that through, you know, again, identifying what those individuals need with that school and addressing that. And so this would be a, a good jumping off point for us in the fall, to talk about who are they and how do we move those kids?
One of the nice things that NWA does provide us with is something called the learning continuum. That learning continuum actually breaks out the skills per student. And so that's that drilling down to that individual student that Mr. Gregoire was talking about, that will really help start having the teachers look at that learning continuum for their classes coming in in the fall and be able to start addressing those skills that those children need to shore up, if you will, based on this data, which is really kind of exciting. We didn't have it before and now we have it as for the NWA.
Boy? Are the students that are in that low percentile, like that five percent, have they been invited to summer, summer learning so that maybe they don't regress and maybe they can master the things that they have?
Yeah, we, we picked a, you know, using our data, essentially a certain percent, twenty-five percent on the lower, whether that was regular ed, special ed or title one. We have, we have a full building. We'll watch it, sir.
Well.
Did you already tell us what NWA stands for?
Northwest Education Association. It's actually the MAP test, which is a measure of academic progress. So that's why you have both of them in your packet. It says NWA and MAP. So it's the measure of academic progress, both for reading and for math.
What we have lost here is that continuum of NWA. We, you, you did NWA in the building for a number of years. You had a gap, so this is our first year of looking at this, this data again. So you, you know, so we can't, or at this point, look at the data and say, okay, where were those kids last fall or not this past fall, the fall before or the spring before? So again, as we move forward, we have a continuum.
How come it's not Northeast Education Association?
It's Northwest because they're actually in Portland, Oregon.
Oh.
That's where their headquarters are.
I was thinking of Seattle. So.
International, international company.
Thank you.
Is there any further?
So we've been spending some time planning our extended school year program for our kids that require some programming. We will bring some intent hires tonight for staffing. We have three different classrooms running, so there'll be a teacher and a pair in each classroom. Monica Brandon is supervising. We have a couple of kids that will be, will be more than fully programmed because their IP requires a longer summer programming. And we have had an additional high district placement this month, but we will be losing a district placement at the end of the season. We should be okay in terms of our, our financial piece to that. And we have the second graders of college that.
Right.
Any questions?
So as I sat down to type this up, I realized what a full month we had. As I usually look back at my calendar, sort of from this anything, just to summarize, you know, Kudos at the eighth, our, our middle school, the seventh and eighth grade, you see, we had the solar sprint where the kids went to Keene State to compete and then they were at UNH a couple of days later to go there and try out their submersibles that they created and had competitions there at the school. So again, if you look at the National History Day, the solar sprint, the sea perk, really reaching out and doing different things within the community, giving our students more opportunities to compete and kind of show off what they have learned and how, how they're doing it. So I think it's outstanding for the middle school. As our students prepare to go to high school, as usual, the athletic department came down and talked to our kids and talked about what the expectations are in regard to academics and athletics and making that strong connection for the two and making some good connections for our students who will need some support when they get there to be strong students as well as athletes. Student, the student talent show on Fort Howard wasn't here for it. We were away at Kansas, as we talked about, where it was a, a big hit and sounds like I missed a really good, so good shows. Seventh grade held their first community yard sale on the side yard as they're preparing for next year. Their Boston trips, are already looking forward to that trip to Boston. K2 had a fun night, so instead of having a dance, they had a fun night where they went out, they played lots of games and ran around and just had a good time, so kind of including them in those after school activities. Camp Calumet, always a big hit, so they had a rainy start to their trip, but it ended with some, some sunshine, they had a good time and while a little soggy upon return, they certainly came back with smiles. Our preschool students, our little ones, they came and visited as they prepare for next year in kindergarten, so always forget how small they are when they come walking in, they're holding hands together, it's really, it's very cute, very nice. And our kids put in a good job, do a good job putting on the reception for them. And we had our volunteer reception last week. It was lightly attended, but I think people are very busy, so hopefully those people will get there, they're doing very soon. And we wrapped up a successful year with athletics as baseball and softball came with blows, not to forget soccer, but early in the fall, but you know, talking to Mr. Boynton, it's a pretty successful start to athletics, probably looking forward to it for next year.
The disso, this form report, as you see, our total referrals for that month of May were twenty-four, was down from the previous month. If you look at our repeat offenders, perhaps students who've come in more than once to the office in a single month, we don't, we were, had three and that accounted for twenty-nine percent of all of our referrals for the month. That's the same percentage from the month before. Year to date is for total off referrals of ODRs, which are the majors, one ninety-four. And then you have a year to date with students who have nine or more official referrals, which would account to, they're coming in about once a month or more on average. And that was eighteen percent of all official referrals were that, that's down from twenty percent. That is though only two students. So we have two, only two students who are taking that up and those two students have familiar thirteen percent of our official referrals. If you look at our suspensions, we had, we had two bussing issues with somebody on the fifth that it had been enough of a spot where, you know, they'd had enough warnings to, let's just see what it looks like if we, in terms of the current parents' importance of safety as well, and that's really had that, that spot. Any other questions?
Did the enrollment actually go up? Both of you on?
Yeah. We had a new family move in, three children, so. Well, I guess it's cool.
Okay, SAU sixty-four. Mr. Tersey?
Just to, just to let the board know that we mentioned briefly at our last meeting, the, Derek and I had an opportunity to go out to Kansas to present at what's actually known as their summer summit. We were asked to go out there and affiliation was Swift and on the genesis, Kansas University presentation, however, we quickly found out that it's referred to as the University of Kansas and make sure you don't say Kansas University over there. We, we were part of a presentation network at their summer summit that was about four hundred educators from across the state of Kansas and we had an opportunity to hear the teacher of the year in Kansas speak. She was a high school science teacher. She spoke as a keynote and we also heard the incoming commissioner of education and the current interim commissioner of education speak regarding the status of their state when it comes to accountability and their thoughts about their future and how they want to move the state forward. And it was, it was pleasant to hear that what they were stating to all the educators in Kansas was something that has been discussed in New Hampshire over the past five years plus. So it was nice sitting there as, you know, administrators and educators in New Hampshire to know that our state is ahead when it comes to moving forward with a vision around really just supporting schools and supporting school districts compared to that past punitive type of system where you had constant designations and you were required to do this and now it's moving in the direction of the support as to what do you need in order to move your system forward. So it's nice to hear that New Hampshire is ahead of the game. Our, our presentation was based specifically on our use of technology within, at the Our, our presentation was based specifically on our use of technology within, at the district level, the building level, and the classroom level to do what's known as flipping a classroom or flipping a staff meeting. And what that entails is we actually are able to provide information to the staff or to students via videos or PowerPoints prior to a lesson. And students then come in the following day and the teacher has the time to facilitate the learning because students have already seen the lesson. I initiated this with the district visioning process and the use of Google Classroom and it got some recognition. And Jerry brought it into the school to flip his cla, his staff meeting, and then teachers took on the use of that technology and it got some recognition. And his teachers are taking it to a whole different level, which is fantastic. So we're invited to go out and speak about the use of technology at a district level as well as a classroom level. So it's nice to be there and be able to highlight the great things that are happening at Paul School.
Want to go first? I just had a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. Jerry, sorry. Jerry, can you tell us a little bit more about the flipping of a classroom?
Sure. That is, it happened at a couple of different levels. Like usually with the older kids, right now, the teacher will, we video their lesson so that the student can look, watch the lesson, review the lesson, and move at their own pace. And sometimes that ends up as homework. Sometimes that ends up as classwork. And it's meant more, it gives those kids that are, who are, who get it, to move on faster. They move ahead, you know, like for example, in eighth grade math, the expectations next year will be us type introducing some higher level math to kids who are, will be faster than the other group. The kids who are getting it at the regular pace will stay at that regular pace and still have their accessible teacher, but they're spending more time in the classroom, working on those things that they learned the night before, rather than spend their time in the classroom doing it. And she's able to break out the classroom into different groups and say, okay, this group is moving a little faster, let's move them, they can get a little, a little better. This group here is getting right at the right pace, and this group here over here needs a little extra help. And if you walk into that classroom, you'll see all these groups working. And she's able to kind of just float around the room and touch base with them and see what they need. You know, Mr. Kendrick took it and ran with it. You know, he had a piece on showmanship and did his video. Initially, he had his own lead zipline, but realized that he may have outgaged himself just a little. So then he picked up, you know, a heavy metal that's more contemporary and talked to, and so as the, as he flips the video or he records the video, one of the pieces of software we use, you can, you can put questions in. This is an example of showmanship where the smoke is coming out of the ears of the pieces on the stage. At the end, those questions, those statements he makes, he asks questions. So there you can make an assessment of how much they got out of it. Same thing with math, same thing with language arts. And those are just a couple of examples where people are starting to deal with it. On our end, you know, my end, we're doing staff day. So instead of saying, look, you don't have to sit with me. You can walk just on Saturday morning in your pajamas, we have coffee. You can sit there and watch my, listen to me or tune me out, whatever you're going to do. But they get some PD in there, some professional development. We're talking about what they understand about assessing in the classroom. So it may help us drive the professional development in the future. What did the staff understand? Are we strong in this? Do we have people really get it? And they give you professional development for the teachers. It's becoming a great tool in the building and, you know, I have, have great hopes for next year.
Wonderful.
Ralph? So this presentation was wrapped around SWIFT? Is that right?
We were invited by SWIFT to go out there. However, our presentation was specific to flipping techno, flip technology. It incorporated SWIFT in the sense that the visioning work that we have done in this building around the SWIFT domains have, was initiated through my use of Google Classroom to facilitate basically a building level, district level, staff meeting, and to solicit feedback from the staff via that software platform. And then the visions, services are based on that, so.
Prior to SWIFT, just embracing or installing or initiating and implementing competency-based education?
No, it's, it's all about supporting what you currently have, your strengths in your building. And if you want to discover any deficiencies, then support that as well. It's really a, a support of an organically grown type of support network within your own school or your own district.
Or do you have a question?
I do. I'm going to ask two questions, probably not super popular on one, but I'm going to ask anyway. My first question is, I received phone calls home about flip.
Yeah.
And the parents were very concerned that the teacher wasn't interacting with the students, teaching the lesson. So my primary concern is because I think it's a wonderful idea, but how did you introduce this and roll this out to the parents so that they would know that it's happening in the classroom and to know that it's not the teacher being lazy, it's that the teacher is actually taking the time to implement this and to engineer a way that her students can learn better with more hands-on time. So I, I, I don't necessarily, and I explained that to the parents that contacted me, that they really needed to do, you know, do a little research and that it's a positive thing and that it's going to, it's going to help the teacher have more hands-on time with the students in the classroom. But how did you roll that out to them?
You know, we didn't roll it out to parents. Partly because it's just been something that's kind of coming through and really introducing the teacher and try this out and see if there's something more to try next year. Because I expect to roll it out to parents next year as they experience it themselves. As I said, I expect to do a video blog and flip it out to the parents. They have an idea, so in front of the beginning of the month, they hear from me what's going on and flip it out to them. So again, they'll have that opportunity.
Okay. I'm, I'm just, and I know it's at the end of the year, but if parents are calling me, then that just tells me that we need to communicate a little better with them so that they understand what's going on.
I wouldn't disagree.
The second question I have is, I know that the board voted to give all of your travel expenses away, so what line did this trip come out of?
The SWIFT center covered all of it.
Really?
Entire trip.
Wow. Awesome. I'm sure that'll, I'm sure I'm okay if that's how.
All right.
But that's great. Thank you for going. And it's, it's nice that you guys were asked or decided to go or to give a presentation. That's nice.
Steve?
Excuse me. What is the content that the kids are seeing or utilizing or is there any outside content that they're, that is being brought in for these videos that they're watching?
There might be. I mean, you know, we'll say like Mr. Kendricks, that was a YouTube video of a music scene. You may also find somebody that does some kind of innovative way of teaching algebra, whatever it might be. She might incorporate that into it. We pull from all kinds of different media sources.
What happens from the research that I've done on it that I could find was that the children are going to be, the idea of it is so that the children will go home and watch these videos, the homework.
Yep.
What happens with, I'm sure not everybody has internet access at home.
And it's not as widespread yet. Again, we'll be doing a survey in the fall, Steve, to, you know, determine what level. Because that's been a big question we've had. Is this something we want to do? Is this something we can do? And will we be able to get it out to the masses? And for those students who don't have it, they'll be, they'll get it again. They get it right in class. But this is more to take those kids who are already getting, get it quickly. They can come to the class and they can start working on the other problems against, specifically with math, so that we can kind of move them ahead faster. But yeah, we've taken that into account. Those kids who don't have it, who may not have had it, you know, at home, because there are going to be kids who you give paperwork to, they go home and they don't do the homework. And so they have to come in, they still already have that information.
Do you, is there, is there, who oversees the content going out to the kids?
The classroom teachers.
Classroom teachers, huh? Oh, what was it? The other thing I had on this was, I looked on the Kansas University website, and all I could find on there, that I, you said it was a national, a national program this was and that you were requested to go out there?
Yeah, we, we found out that it was, it was their state Summer Summit, and they had some, they had local presenters, they also had national presenters there. But however, it was very similar to the Summer Summit in Keene. It was over four hundred educators from Kansas that were there.
Yeah, because all I could find, it was a state.
Yep.
State seminar, and that you had to request them to go out and present.
No, they, they contacted us and said, are you, are you interested? And then we said yes. And bottom line, at that point, when we said, yeah, we're interested, then SWIFT submitted the, the actual description of the presentation to the University of Kansas for approval that we present. And at that point, we were approved and off we went.
Oh, that's the, yeah. I don't know, do you, is it another situation where, I mean, you know, this day and age, everybody's going like this already. Is this another situation where, you know, you, what you're doing, you're putting kids in front of a screen again? I mean, is, does it take away from human interaction? I mean, if, if you, if kids, I mean, everyone, you know, kids, everyone does it, but children, I mean, at what point is there going to be any human interaction and get away from the screen? I mean, technology's good to a point, but I think, you know, if you just sit kids in front of a computer or an iPad or a screen, and now you're going to be doing that even more so at home, are we losing the, the human interaction piece of?
One of the intents is to, of flipping a classroom in general is so that you actually have more human interaction while the students are in class on an individual level. So instead of all students listening to a teacher in the front of the classroom provide a lesson, they can view that lesson at home. And then when they come into the classroom, the teacher has more time spent individually with each student, where they are based on that lesson. And even within the classroom, we'll give you an example, we have a high school math teacher at Newt that's been using this for quite some time. The, the lesson will be there the night before, the following day, and I observed this happen the following day, he's interacting with groups of students based on whether they're advanced or they're, they're working right at that pace of that lesson, or he's working with students that are struggling, and it's, it's based on an individual level. So he actually has more interaction with students than he normally would compared to just standing in front of the classroom. So he's actually been able to have the opportunity to come up with, so Steve, how's this working out for you? What do we need here compared to spending thirty minutes on delivering the instruction? And another student that might be struggling that didn't get the lesson because it was going too fast can actually view the lesson on their, on, on one of our pieces of technology or even their own piece of technology and listen to that lesson again, pause it, ask the teacher questions, go back to it and so forth. So it's a, it's an innovative teaching tool. It sort of, it combines technology, but it also allows for more opportunity to touch base with students on an individual level.
At school, but then they would be losing the human interaction with their family while they're home.
Potentially.
But if it's treated as homework, they're going to have to do that on their own without their family or have their family sit next to them like some kids do, like if they need help in math.
That's all fine, but is this an addition? Is this, is this just more FaceTime in front of a screen that, I mean, that's what, I mean, you, if kids are going to start losing that human interaction, as we would just explain, but now possibly in this case, they may be losing time with the human interaction of their family members. That's my question.
Mr. Kendrick?
The intention, Mr. Brown, is to not have homework where they're just doing the work of what they learned in class that day, but really to learn what they need to know for the following day. The teacher makes the assessment of where those students are and can make those determinations in the classroom, what she needs to do to help them move forward from where they are, whether they're at the low end, the middle, or the high end. And again, it's not to add on to homework, it's in place of the traditional homework.
Great.
So the next item is, just to do the board an update, I had a community forum on June ninth. I had a low turnout, and I know it's because of the time of year, and I've also got some very good feedback on how to advertise better. It was sponsored by the PTA. I was very thankful the PTA provided a couple pizzas. And I had an opportunity to sit down with a couple of community members and have a conversation around continuing the visioning work that I started last spring. I got a lot of good information out of that, and I'm now going to look to try again in the fall with a different type of advertising tool and really just continue that visioning work. However, at this point, I have enough information. I have about seven to eight pages of notes from last spring's forum, this, this forum, as well as I have about a hundred and fifty, I have a little over a hundred and fifty statements from staff around developing a vision for, for the school district in general. So I'm going to put that together this summer by putting, just, I'm going to take all of the statements that I have, the notes that I have, and I'm going to put those notes into, there's a program called Wordle that you can put it into, and it pops out all of the most commonly used terms. And those commonly used terms will then go into a, a nice descriptor, vision statement. And the intent is to be able to have a vision statement that is developed by the community that people can say, that was my idea, that was my thought. So they own it compared to just a committee of ten people putting together a statement. People don't understand it or know that we have it and just sit it up on a shelf. So hopefully it's something that will be sustained as a vision because the community owns it regardless as to who is on the board, who is superintendent, who's the principal. It should be able to last because the community owns it.
This is in place of our policy AD, which I'd like to, next time we have a policy on the agenda.
We're going to do that. Why don't you do that the first meeting of the summer month?
This would be in place of that policy, the school board policy AD?
No, not at all. It actually follows the policy because the policy states that the board will develop a mission statement, and the board will review that mission statement annually. And so I'm taking a different approach to develop, to reviewing and developing a, what I'm calling a vision statement, because a mission statement is actually your action plan to attain the vision. And what I want to do is be able to bring to the board for their approval, a community vision statement which follows the policy. So we're reviewing it, and now I'm going to bring a recommendation based on the community's input to potentially change what we currently have so that the community owns it. So I'm following the policy, it's just going in a different way than has happened in the past.
But, but your end goal is to change that policy or just change the input part of it?
No, you might have pieces within our current mission statement that might be similar to what the community said for what they would like to see in a, in a vision statement and their aspirations for students. So it could be a combination of both, and it might, it, it could be wordsmith differently than what we currently have. However, the intent is to just support what the community feels is important for our students.
I understand the difference. I appreciate the difference.
Thank you.
So one more item.
Go ahead.
On the other question.
Morning.
I have one, I just want a residency issue update.
Okay. I had, I had sent an email to Superintendent Hopkins to confirm that the students were enrolled. I have not heard back at this point. I'll follow up.
Is there a way you can shoot us an email so that we're not waiting three weeks, four weeks to hear that information because final payment will be due, we're done?
Yeah, the, I still have it on my notes from the last agenda, send an email out once I know, and I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you.
But one more item, Chair. I just wanted, and this just came to my attention, that we have preliminary Title I allocation for next year, and it's lower than our current fiscal year, and it will not be able to sustain our two Title I teaching program, uh, two Title- Title I teachers that are currently paid out of Title I and Title II A. So, you know, we are guaranteeing everybody a position that currently is employed, therefore we have to look at moving one of our current Title I teachers into one of the, we currently have a grade two opening, and there might be math interventionists moving into there and that position might come available. So regardless of what the open position is in the school, one of those teachers will go in there. And I wanted to mention that this evening because, you know, as we have continuing conversation around potentially hiring a new staff member to address some of the class sizes, then that would be additional monies to the budget compared to not filling the position.
What's the monetary difference?
I don't have the specifics off.
If we could get the specifics, then that would help us to figure out if we need to cut the budget somewhere to keep that teacher, or if we would like to move the math interventionist. I just wanna have all my ducks in a row before I make that decision.
Just giving you that heads up right now.
Yep.
This is for next year.
Yep.
Well, so as we, as we move forward with any of those changes, we're bringing it to the board, let's figure it out.
I was gonna piggyback off the community forum, we have a community forum Monday night, six p.m., we had advertised the economy, you know, before we did, and the system required to go into targeting Title I schools to enforce a whole school Title I program. And so our point on that is to talk about what that would look like, what that means, what the benefits are, by going to a whole school Title I. We'll send that out tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And when is that, Jerry?
Monday at six.
It's coming Monday?
But we wanna give you guys a heads up first.
Can you tell me a little bit about that? What are the, what are the benefits of that and what, is that, is that going to classify the district of the school?
I guess what is the reason? What are the benefits of it? In a targeted program, you can only work, Title I staff can only work with certain students, whether that's through academic, low academics, or through socioeconomic status. In a whole school, we're not restricted at all who we can work with, so we can work with any student within the building. And that's really the primary advantage. It removes restrictions.
Does it increase the strings and the insurance?
No, we don't get any more money, nothing else is different except we just qualify for it. Go out and bond.
Yes, that's why this one is not.
Michael, then, so that's gonna be, this coming year's budget that we've already corrected?
Did you figure out that number?
No.
It comes to a little over thirty thousand dollars, less than what we have this year. However, I wanna confirm the numbers because what you would need to really understand if you're looking at working through the operating budget is we have to compare the salaries, what do the salaries actually cost us next year compared to what we have for allocation? So give you those monies, but, you know, it's a little over thirty thousand dollars less.
And I just need to let you know that we do not have Title II allocation yet, and twenty-five percent of those two salaries was picked up in Title II. So we don't know how much of a fit we're gonna have to the end until we do that analysis that Mr. Tracy just made up.
But that's preliminary number.
Since that preliminary, that's how much the Title I only allocation is, is lower from last year to this year, and I don't know what Title II's gonna bring or not bring.
My intent for bringing that up this evening was just to let the board know that our funds could be lower, our funds will be lower next year out of the federal entitlements, and I'm not a gambler when it comes to trying to cover the salaries out of those funds. We know they're already gonna be low. So that's why I mentioned to Jerry that there's potential to be moving around those positions within the school. And before we looked at reductions in our operating budget for this year sixteen, so I'm not feeling any wiggle room.
Aren't they usually, or it should be for the following year? I mean, it's kinda, now that our budget's already made, to find out at, you know, the middle of June, that you're not gonna have the money that you anticipated last November. That creates a problem.
The people that are employed under any of our federal entitlements know that that position is based on, is based on the grant funding. Unfortunately, we receive our allocations this, this time of year, which is actually somewhat early, and, you know, those grants, the Title I specifically runs from July first to August thirtieth of each fiscal year. So we don't know in the planning process of our budget cycle, but we don't, we don't anticipate those salaries in our operating budgets, we know they're paid out of the grant monies. If we don't have the grant money, then that position is not a position that we fill. So it does make it difficult.
Which is another problem relying on federal grants that may not no longer exist.
Through the CBA, this is all clear and explicit in their contract, right? Everybody understands that.
Yep.
Bonnie? If we're moving from a targeted Title I school to a complete Title I school, how would the children benefit from losing their math interventionist? That, I mean, once, I mean, even the kids like, that just barely reach the bar and socially, economically barely reach the bar, finally get a chance to have that extra help and then it's not gonna be there. Isn't that the reason that we're, so I guess I just?
I didn't, is that the situation?
Not good timing.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I just find that to be like a conundrum, that's not real positive. So I guess.
Did you say there's no longer a math interventionist at any point?
I didn't say that.
No.
I didn't hear that.
Well, isn't that who you said that, that's?
Potentially.
Potentially the math interventionist could take the second grade position, isn't that what you said?
Regardless of what positions happen between the math interventionist and the grade two position, we will not have the funding to support two Title I teachers.
So that is usually the interventionist that goes first?
No.
No?
We have to make that determination as to whether it be the Title I.
But one of those positions will be offered the other in-house position?
Correct.
So either way, whether it's reading or math, one of them is gone.
One of those two positions.
One of those two positions is gone and they're both Title I. And we're going?
The math interventionist is paid out of the operating budget.
Okay.
However, the two Title I teachers are guaranteed positions in the building, so.
Until the money, until the federal funding stops.
Correct.
According to the CBA and that contract, they stop, they understand that.
And how does going to a whole school Title I impact this?
Well, just as Bonnie was bringing up, if we go whole school and we're there to provide more supports for a larger population of students, we have to juggle that with fewer staff.
So will we even be able to entertain that idea?
Well, those are the conversations we're having at the building level right now, and that's why it'll be a future agenda item for us to really provide you with more detailed information tonight, which is not a giving a heads up.
Before school starts?
Yeah, we'll tackle it in the lobby.
I wonder, I wonder if we can know about the other funding?
It really varies.
I wish I could tell you last, last year, I don't think we met it until school had already started.
All right.
Why don't you keep us updated?
Thank you.
New business bus routes for approval since 2015, sixteen.
According to policy, the board has to approve all bus routes for the school year, and you have all the bus routes, and are any changes to our bus routes?
No changes. Same as what we have now?
I haven't been made aware of any changes.
I make a motion to approve this for bus routes for 2015, sixteen.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Old business facilities, listed facility needs. Let's see what I have, Mr.?
Yep. You guys had asked me for some input on that, Mr. Castle has done his part, cheat out for you. On the top piece there, the rent defense, Bonnie had asked about that. I call it over at Gilmerton, that nineteen twenty-five, that's a twelve-foot gate to go around the property, that I believe is every year. I emailed them on that to clarify that, I did not get a response because I was like, nineteen twenty-five a month, nineteen twenty-five a year. I asked for six months to a year, so I'm assuming a year. Next piece down there on the curving, in-house, I call it home, you pull down some is worth fifty-two dollars a day for a saw, you have to buy the blade, this would be to cut the hot top back in order to get the curving note, the hot top. Former, I just did two-by-twelves on the radius up around the top there, would end up having to use plywood up there to make a bend, because that is a curve. Grade stakes, and then concrete was a hundred and seventeen dollars a yard right now, with an additional eight dollars per yard for fire, I was figuring, with, concrete is a four-yard minimum, if not, you have to pay usually a fee for that, so, that's gonna be in four yards and find some place to make a pad, you know, we have plenty of places around here with some concrete, so. So the total for everything is, that labor line is not correct because there's no labor involved, because I would be doing it, so the number, the total number would be one thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the material. Figuring about five days of labor out there, because I come in, I open the building up, get everything situated, then I would have to go out and go to work. If this happens, I am going to work out there. I won't be in the building, I won't be taking phone calls, I'm not gonna be checking on the roof, I'm gonna go do the concrete, and I'll get it done, if that's okay with everybody. Because I can't go out there, form for a half an hour, forty-five minutes, chisel concrete, run back in, do something else, run back out, chisel concrete for another half an hour, that would be something where job gets done, goes and gets done, and that'll be it. So that bottom number is one thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars for materials, and I'm figuring five days of work, just because I already calculated my time. Then on, we also had Pat Stevens, which I did finally get in that estimate, I don't know if you guys saw that, and that was for him to come in with his crew, two hundred and sixty feet of concrete, knowing Pat would be in there today too.
What was that?
Forty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I would also need to get a truck. I don't know who would want to loan one of those out. And get permission to dump it wherever that would be, because it does have rebaron in it, so I don't think the town would take it, put it to rebaron because it grinds it.
Seems like I don't rebaron there, it hadn't been a problem, I always say something.
Well, yeah, but times have changed, there's different command. You had honchos over there too, with Mike being there and stuff, I don't know what his new rules implementing, policies are, but I'll check with him on that.
Joe, what are you talking, and this estimate's for two hundred and sixty feet, you're not going two hundred and sixty feet. You are? I mean, does, I mean, I, I was out there at one, one point, I think I counted like six bad sections?
There's a starting right from the gate, coming around the turn, and finishing this whole front piece, that's bad, taking out the concrete and putting new concrete in place.
But not all sections need to be repaired, correct?
Well, concrete does, except for what I've already repaired.
So you're going up to the granite curving and stopping?
Yeah, I was gonna pull it away from where the granite curving is, do one section, whether it be forty feet, sixty feet, a hundred and twenty feet, whatever it is, and then go to the next section.
We need to do the whole thing?
You guys don't want to, you know, it's a safety hazard, yeah.
Well, there are, yeah, there's like, like I said, I believe there's like a half a dozen sections that.
Take a field trip, go check it out.
One thing about doing it all at once is just uniform, you know, you have to rebaron consistent through it, you've got a uniform finish as opposed to a patchwork.
I mean, if I was a contractor for hire coming in, I'd be looking at it and saying, do the granite, I understand I'm looking for a Pat's job here, you know, but that would be me personally as a contractor, I probably would, probably wouldn't even bid it, I'd be off going pouring full of something.
Well, what would be the difference between this and the granite? How much?
Actually, I did talk to Freddie Myers about this, and down in Rochester right now, where they're putting in that new building right at the end of the highway, all that old curbing's coming out, SUI has it stockpiled up, I've actually been meaning to call him and see if he would donate the curbing. So if we could get the curbing donated and find somebody to put in used curbing, which I don't know if we could do that.
You have to paint it first, you know, just make sure.
Well, they clean it all up and stuff like that, they'll reuse it, but you know, Billy Greedo would donate it to a school, probably, so that was another option that.
Still be doing a lot of digging.
Oh, yeah. And I'm gonna shoot myself on the foot with this one, but there is somebody out there that knows people that tend to concrete that will donate the concrete. But the contractor, if we decide to go with Pat Stevens, or put it out to bid, that person won't get the concrete donated, because he probably, that's how he makes a living. So I'll let you guys mull over that for a little bit. Talked to the roof for about the thirty-five hundred dollars up there, being warranty. And with our heavy rains that we had last night, no leaks. So I'm envisioning that with all of our heat that we've had and stuff like that, stuff is heated back up, close those holes up, this winter when we get cold weather again, it's gonna contract, open back up.
Is it possible that it's a condensation problem? Or like a wind blowing, or it just, it's weird that you can go up there and pour buckets in, it doesn't come through, but certain days of the week or whatever, it'll come through in different areas, so, I mean, I'm wondering if it's?
I'm telling you, I'm totally baffled on it. I have no idea. I honestly, I mean, if I have to make an educated guess, then I would think, I'm seriously thinking it's that transition strip, where somehow, some way, it's getting up underneath there because we've had winds out of the north, it's done it, it's bizarre. So that's on the table for you guys to talk about also. And then the roof on, of Mr. Castle.
Yep, I, um, looked into the, the funds we have in the trust funds. And our current balance is, is twenty-seven thousand, two eighty. And we have thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars left for payments. And then on July first, we should be receiving. Thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And funds needed for phase three for the following years, forty-two thousand, two hundred and seven. So we're already looking at a shortage of about forty-eight, forty-nine. Without the, uh, roof involved.
Can we bump that up?
Those numbers were so.
We bumped that money up to cover the additional cost of the five year.
I'm sorry, the thirty-seven, three fifty-eight is after we pay those, the, the leftover. So the twenty-seven, two eighty, and then you take out thirty-one, nine twenty-two. So that forty-two thousand that we bumped it up to, that's the balance that will be after we pay the, what's left of two thousand fifteen.
I thought we were, I thought we bumped everything up so that there was no deficit whatsoever with the roof. Because why would we approve something that was going to be a deficit? We wouldn't, I don't think, we wouldn't do that.
There's, there's not a deficit to do the roof work over the summer. This is, this is showing what we have to put in a warrant article for this will year seventeen. What we're shy for fifth, phase three. We're clear for the summer. For the summer work.
But no, when we, we had a five-year plan of how much, how many, what monies needed to be put in a warrant article every year. And it covered it. Without adding additional monies to it every year.
And we're covered for this coming summer because of the warrant article that passed into ballot this past March. And now we have to develop a warrant for next summer for phase three. Which is not a lot of money that we'll be asking for that, for that, in that article to cover phase three.
So you're just basically preparing us for the, the, um, budgets here for this year with this information.
Correct, with or without the, um, roof, including, uh, natural coating.
How can you not do the roof with mildew and mold and all those other issues? How can you not take care of a leak? That would be core practice on our part. What, what is crazy is that we can't specifically say where the leak is and that it would probably be a little infuriating to not necessarily everybody here, but specifically to him. If we spend the money to fix the roof and then Lincoln things still leaks.
Obviously, Joe's baffled on this one when he says, I have no idea. But what this comes down to is if we spend the money to fix the leak, that's just what we have to ask for in next March warrant. We can cover it. There's enough in the trust fund to cover fixing the leak. It's just what we have to ask for in additional monies for following article.
And we did have, um, the company come out that's doing the roofing and look at it. And again, I mean, we did the membrane roof three years ago now, and we did the architectural show for those two years ago. Thinking we were being diligent and doing the right thing moving forward when we had this issue, so. John Ferguson, the owner of the company. Won't warranty it, but he's very diligent about fixing what's wrong, trying to get out.
It's not a, are the boilers up in that area?
Kitchen.
Still time to boil our valve and come up down.
No, because I've even been up into the attic when it's leaking and crawled all the way as far as I possibly get down in there.
One skinny guy like me?
Same here right now, but, uh. You can't see any remnants of anything there. Even around all the mushroom fans that we have up there? No, because that was my first impression, it was all just coming from here. You get in there, there's nothing.
Would that be a good place for the door?
Yeah. The double door for the furnaces, you mean? Yeah, no, that's going to go by the kitchen.
Okay, different, different area.
Totally different area. It's not going down here, right over here versus above the gym, isn't it?
All right, can you give us the breakdown on the sheds?
Yep, that shed is just numbers that I came up with from doing square footage. And that was again with having the inmates come in and do the labor. So that was, that number was basically for material. And that was to do all three, so that could change now with, um, other plans being sought after. I mean, we could do the smaller shed and this shed out here by the ball fields and leave the maintenance building. Slash garage, slash chicken coop alone.
I say, so you?
Yes. So. Those numbers would change and be smaller amounts of material. And that is with no labor, that's with Ian Phillips having guarded. Little maintenance inmates, I guess you'd say. All Jane in it.
So they're going to load shotguns on the area and, and the premises, right?
Probably not shotguns, but I mean, maybe tasers or something. Modern technology. And then again, the art tables. And that number was from one week, which was, like I said, was the, uh. Online pricing, they were on sale at that time, that could have changed by now.
I guess I'm just, I'm looking at these and I'm thinking that I'm going to have to ask what everybody else is feeling, but I'm looking, I'm thinking that you're going to have to break them down and vote on them piece by piece. Not knowing like if we can get the granite donated.
Look, how do you vote on something that we don't know yet? Joe, Joe gets the granite, that could change.
Right, so.
So. Can I ask how the other board members feel about the run fence? I do see that the debris was cleaned up and whoever did it, I thank you very much for doing that because if I came down and looked at it with Norma and I was thankful that I didn't have to come down and do it, so the fact that.
That was Mr. Fogg and, um, the town did approve for us to dump one load, one, one ton load. And he, there was a ton and a half, he did pay some money out of his pocket for that.
That's great, we really appreciate that.
Forty-one dollars, I put you to something else.
But I, I still have to, as a parent, I still feel that. It could be a hazard to someone, especially in the summertime, kids coming over with their bikes, all the stumps, all the other stuff. And I guess I, I think that a fence should still be put around it to guard the construction area.
Has there been an incident to date out there? I mean, what I witnessed when I was out there working was actually some imaginative kids went out there and played with the rocks and the sticks and they made some words out of rocks and the sticks. And, uh, it was kind of neat. I didn't disturb it because I thought it was, I, you know.
Well, I, I so appreciate that, Ralph. That's what I do for a living, is teach kids how to love nature. That's what I do, so I don't have a problem with that, but I'm looking at the one kid. Who goes over one of those stumps with his bike and breaks his ankle. Or the kid that pushes another kid and they hit a stump and, you know, I, I think of things like that especially, and it's considered a work zone. I mean, there's stuff going on there that we need to protect.
That could happen with, with the fence there.
Yeah, what about the kid climbing the fence and falling on his head?
Well, I, well, maybe you're right.
It's not going to change anything if kids go over the fence.
Or on the fence.
Yes, Mr. Terci?
I'll just throw this in there as well, that the, any of the work that you might approve this evening that will come out of the operating budget. That work needs to actually start at, at some level prior to July first.
Okay.
Just so the board knows.
And long range, Bonnie, and I understand your concern about this, but it's a cost that unless there's been incidents already, um, I mean, the, the. The fact is, the dirt can be removed out of there, um, and those ponds can be implemented. For the monies that are left, less than the monies that are left in there, and if we could get through the leak legalities of the title and all that crap. The kids are going away in three, four days, right? The majority of the children are, are leaving the building. Which I don't know how many kids are going to all along want to come back down here and play in that area, but it just seems, and I do appreciate the concern for the safety, but. I don't think it's necessary, you know, maybe it.
That's okay, Ralph, it's just my opinion.
I understand.
Okay, so. Do we want to make a motion on each item that we can or? I mean, obviously, we'll leave the curving alone until we can get Joe to get it donated or something. We should probably make a motion on what we're going to do with the roof repair. Go ahead.
Can I?
If we leave it?
Should we, should we vote on the, um, the curving contingent on Joe looking at? That way the money will be there.
Could you maybe also put a cap on it, like say I get the curving donated and somebody to put it in, but it's still going to be eight thousand dollars? I mean, you guys may want to decide to go with the forty-five hundred dollar route or the Joe route, whatever. You know, but if there's a cap on it, at least you know what you're probably looking at.
I just want to question a little bit about liability. Joe has a heart of gold. He works this part throughout the school. Aesthetic values on curving, I think if everyone was uniform and consistent and done properly, you would have liability taking care of whoever did it. No offense to Joe. Wouldn't cause any repercussions back on him if there were any problems.
Certainly.
Because I don't know. But if you put up a temporary fence and had it posted, you know, sit out, does that help your liability?
Absolutely not. You can build a wall and put, and have guard dogs on the other side. If someone comes on your property and gets injured, you're still alive. It doesn't. Putting up a fence has absolutely nothing to do with life. It, it doesn't protect it. Kid come, climbs over that fence, even if it says no trespassing, no, you.
If it's the only ball in the neighborhood, when they're playing kickball, they're going to climb the fence and go get the ball, somebody is.
If they want to go in there, they got to go in there. A fence is all comes off.
Yes.
But, um, I agree on putting a cap. I think if you look at the estimate from Stevens, if you brought it up to the board's comp board. Fix the curving, curving up to forty-five hundred dollars and if Joe gets, you know. Sort of grant donated, it might be less than that, but we know we have forty-five hundred dollars to spend on fixing this issue.
Bonnie?
Can the school building afford to have Joe outside for five days and not in here doing repairs that need to be done in-house?
I don't recommend it. He may go a while if it happens.
Yeah. As long as it's five days, he's.
Gone.
He's tied up. Plus, it's a, it's a job, if, you know, hopefully not, you get injured, then you could be out even further than that.
So you put them down?
Oh, my bad.
Exactly.
I'd be looking like Ralph.
Prefer to keep him in the building and.
I think the fine thing is he said there's no labor involved, but he forgets you're paying him.
Right.
So what he's not doing, and you're paying him to do that, you're doubling your labor anyway. So you're going to pay him to do that, but then you're not, he's not doing what you're already asking him to do. Your fault, you might forget about your labor. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, to forty-five hundred dollars on the curb issue and allow Joe to see if the granite curving is available.
For discussion, is that with him doing the work?
Well, I, I'm saying the forty-five hundred in case the curb, the curving isn't available and it's easier for Joe to call. Well, actually, I'd like to see that go out to bed if it's going to go out to other, other.
But how.
It's just up to forty-five hundred dollars in order to make sure the funds are available for some direction, I guess. Not specific to let Joe do.
Bonnie?
I guess my concern is that if some of this work, if, if this particular job also has to be started by July first and we don't meet again until the fifteenth. If we wait to see what we can get donated, we're not going to start the job on time unless he goes out there and starts tearing stuff apart. While we have kids coming into the building for summer school. Is that right?
Maybe. As soon as you vest some, if you make an agreement with somebody and you vest monies, then that is committed. And that's, that's committing those monies, wouldn't it be?
I would certainly think so.
No, because we had people pulling boards off the other building last year, June thirtieth, pulling windows out of the trailer.
My understanding, and I did this before a couple of years ago, as long as any portion of the work begins. Prior to July first, and that was down at the, um. The, um, town yard with the buses and I took my own shovel down there and I dug a little trench. For the electrical and that covered. So, I mean, if you go out there and you take one shovel, pull the dirt.
If you move the power away from the curb, you can begin operations.
Good. So.
Mr. Terci?
However, it needs to be by the who you have agreed to contract to do the work, just for clarification on that.
So you don't have a lot of time to get it, get it started.
That's one of the reasons why my motion does not designate any contract.
Right, just allow the forty-five hundred dollars, is what you're saying. Bonnie?
I guess, I just want, I'm concerned about, um, Joe being pulled from the building, not having time to do this. And then this is heavy manual labor that is going to take more than one man to do. Picking up the granite, if it gets donated, that's machinery, that's fingers getting broken, that's some pretty heavy stuff, so I'm, I guess, I, I mean, why aren't we just saying have Pat Stevens do it? If we're willing to do the forty-five hundred, he can come in here in two days and have the whole thing uniform and done.
Because then what would happen if you get the granite? Now you've already done that, you're going to do the, the granite would be better than the concrete. So until you find out whether or not you can get the granite, it would be wise to wait to find out whether you can get the granite before you start this. Because if you can get the granite, then that would be another discussion that granted, the granite would cost more, but it would be done right. And we would have to expend more money to do the granite, but it would be a better outcome with the granite than doing it with the concrete.
Bonnie?
So are we going to hold a special meeting to figure that out?
Well, no, what, what you could do is. Expend the forty-five hundred now and then if he ends up getting the granite. up getting the granite, we would have to take the balance out of next year's budget. We'd have this $4,500, and then whatever the difference was, we'd have to take out of that.
But what do we do with granite? He's not talking about granite in his bid right here, what do you do when he needs more than one person to work with him? That's gonna be a labor cost that we're not gonna see, but yet we're voting on it.
I think that's the whole point of just expending the $4,500 up to $4,500, then if he finds out he can get the granite, then we'll have to go back and take additional funding out of next year's budget to install the granite. So, we'll get $4,500 out of this year's budget and the balance out of next year's budget, if we get the granite.
So, are you saying if he doesn't get the granite, that you're willing to pay Pat Stevens to come in and do it? But if you're willing, but if he gets the granite, you're willing to make, let him do the work?
Uh-uh. No, it would take, we'd have to hire someone to put, probably install the granite, but the granite would be a better product.
He's saying Joe, no, Joe, no, basically, maybe.
Possibly, depending on whether we get the granite.
Because someone's gonna have to do the prep work to put the granite in.
Well, Ralph, talk.
Well, don't, you don't have to.
What do you propose that I can see?
I just, I'm, I heard, you know, about SUI being contacted and possibly a donation grant, and I can think of other people who are willing to donate their time and machinery to go pick up granite and help install it, you know, I mean, if there's, there's, um, the desire to have granite, I'm sure it can happen. If they say a hundred piece, a hundred dollars a chunk, you know, it's gonna take in 260 feet, which I don't think you have to do, but it'll take, um, 260 divided by eight feet.
So, said person is willing to donate their vehicle, their gas, and their time to do all the digging and help with the granite with no monies?
I can imagine that somebody in town would do that. Probably gotta be with imagination. So, I just, I guess move the, move the motion.
Thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-two and a half.
Thirty-two and a half pieces.
Okay, I have a question, um, and I get the whole granite thing, so if we can get the granite donated, but we're gonna have to pay somebody else, and we don't know that somebody is gonna kindly just come in here and do the work for us, and we're gonna have to pay somebody else to come in, and it's gonna be going above and beyond the $4,500, we're gonna put this work off again until we get the rest of the money, or are we gonna tell the guy, we'll give you this now, pay in the spring? I guess I'm wondering how we're gonna pull that one off.
If we put this $4,500 aside, Joe finds out, yes granite, no granite. If it's yes granite, I think you said it was gonna, it would probably be about eight grand?
I have no idea, I just pulled that out of the sky.
Okay, he pulled eight grand, so you'd be $3,500 short.
Okay.
We would have to go back and take $3,500 out of next year's budget to make the eight grand with this $4,500, so it could be done this summer. Done, anytime, you know, whenever Joe is gonna, or someone could get around to donate, it's always possible.
I'll call, feel free tomorrow, see if he has any of the stuff down there, I just have to deal with the old stuff.
Sorry to add to this, but you also have to keep in mind that, you know, we proposed in the board approve budget cuts for next year, so we should be very hesitant in approving any work for next year that we haven't budgeted for, particularly if we just had a conversation around maintaining our current staff.
Right.
Just being cautious.
But, I think you're getting a better product with granite, and it will last longer, especially if you're getting the granite for free, it would be a wiser decision to go that way, 'cause the granite's gonna last, oh, far, it'll last the concrete.
Bonnie?
How many years is the concrete up there lasting? How long's it been there?
Ninety-seven, probably is when they put that last addition on. I imagine that's when they did the sidewalk.
It's not 20 years.
And the granite will probably last forever.
The, yeah, the salt.
Salt and the plow too, I mean, a lot of them are. The plows are no good for granite either, they won't kill them, but I...
So, can we move the question, the motion? I need a motion to expend up to $4,500 on the curving issue.
In a second.
Is that...
It's $10,007.
Ten, $10,070.
So, if it's $4,500, we're gonna go over?
Sixty, eight sixty. So, you're over.
I got, I got 98.36 if we're not buying the fence.
I count the fence, so there's a difference in that there.
Can we move the motion on the table?
98.36, so go ahead and move the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For, that's just on the curving.
And this is just the $4,500? We're not going anything about the curving? About the $4,500?
In a perfect world, the grant will be donated, the label will be donated, and the curving will be fixed.
So, who gets the $4,500?
Right.
Now, well, the school district, we save it, they don't have to spend it. It doesn't have to be spent just because we have it. No?
I'm opposed. I'm opposed.
So, that leaves $6,200 left over for other expenditures. I'll make a motion to... Make a motion to expend $4,036 out of that line for the shed improvements.
A second for discussion.
Go ahead.
If we need to be pulling, are the sheds doable for another year if they had to be?
Yeah, just touch the share at the top on one end, yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, it's, it's $1,000, and that's basically what the coverage of the roof is.
It's just aesthetics.
And that's the curving.
It's aesthetics and our sports program, just trying to move things forward.
But if we have the curving, which is...
But that's all the sheds, right?
That's two of the sheds, right? Because you're gonna leave the third one out because it might be...
The $4,036 was for material for all three.
Okay, so...
So, if we leave the new SAU building now...
I just so like things...
Due to the shed, two sheds, it's gonna be astronomically less.
Less, at least even less than half, maybe, huh?
The trailer.
For materials, yeah, if we can actually make some outdoor work out of the shed, so the school's home.
They left the rent.
So, um, I mean, I, the savings wouldn't probably be more than $2,000 on, on that $4,036.
It may be more than that.
Yeah, well, that'd be an idea, leave that in case we get the granite and that'll cover the curving.
Good idea.
So, you're gonna vote against the motion?
Absolutely. Plus, you're using prisoners, that just incentivizes for the gov, the government to incarcerate more people with stupid things, to get free labor. So, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that to begin with.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
The motion I put out there was to expend the $4,036 on the improvements to the sheds.
Are you seconding the for discussion?
With the understanding that only two are gonna be done?
Correct.
Is that what we're, is that...
That's what we're voting on.
That's not in the motion, though.
It's not in the motion.
Put it in the motion. Oh, you can't put it in the motion, could you second it?
I'll amend my motion to that.
Okay.
I will amend my second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
And then all we have left is the art room tables.
I need a motion for six art room tables.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What about the roof?
You skipped the roof.
And then half of it's the leak. The leak, leak is $135, they figured?
Yeah, what that was, is to take the transition strip out of it, um, 60 feet of that, sort of the skylight in the art room around the horseshoe, take that out, clear up two to three rows of shingles, four feet, I believe you said, um, strip that out, new ice and water shield, down all the membrane, and then bring it down two to three courses below where it is.
Someone, who was it that did that? The, the inside of the swimming pool, three years, is that company?
No, that was Mills Construction.
That's right, yeah. But it looked all right at that point, but...
Yeah, it looked great, it's that piece of metal drip heads, transition strip there.
Well, so ba, basically, all we'd have to vote on is $3,500 for the leak?
Yep.
Because we've already approved the...
Already approved, 98.36. Oh, actually, we didn't.
No, we've already, we already, didn't we already, um...
The roof, sorry.
Yeah, the roof's already approved.
It's the leak.
And the $3,500 can be come out of savings, hopefully?
Hopefully. So, I'll, I'll make a motion to decide what we do with that $3,500 needed for the roof once we hear from Joe on the, on the materials of the curve.
What? No, 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 no. Oh, fuck!
Where would the money come from? You got 10,700.
Well, the original, what we have... Original conversation was around the capital reserve fund, and we have the monies to cover that, and we're not pressed, because we don't have to do that by July 1st, because we would have to have a public hearing to expend the monies out of the trust fund for the $3,500, so it gives us a little bit of time to make that happen.
Aye. Can I withdraw my motion?
Please.
I thought we were pressed for time on that.
On this one.
Okay.
If it comes out of the capital reserve.
I'll focus.
The roof project will be starting July 6th.
So...
To give the full warning. And while they're here, that's when that needs to take place, if not, there'll be more money for them to come back.
I don't think he actually made it 'cause we stopped him. Did you finish your motion, or did we all stop you?
Well, I finished it, but I withdrew it, so it's really a row.
Okay, you wanna make a new one?
No.
I'll make a motion to spend $3,500 out of the capital reserve, uh, $3,500 out of the capital reserve fund to fix the leak.
I'll second that. You don't need a public hearing?
Yes, we do.
Well, yeah, that's true, too.
You set up a public hearing so we can, please, get this done?
So, you could, you could make a motion to move forward.
Pending a public hearing, and then, 'cause that way, they're not gonna be, they'll be here probably pretty much a good portion of the... They'll be here two weeks? Bobby?
Two weeks.
We can have a public hearing on May...
We don't meet till the 15th, and that'll be too late, they'll be gone, probably.
We can have a public hearing prior to the, which are all committee meetings, only eight at 6:00. Get it approved, and then while they're up on the roof, they can fix the leak.
That's a Wednesday.
That is a Wednesday.
Just have to post it in the school board meeting, right?
5:30, do it at 5:30.
Well, I mean, they, if they're coming here, the six, two weeks is July 20th, our meeting's the 15th, I mean, could they do that at the end of it, or...
I'm not gonna ask them to. That's, that's like insane. Yeah, don't schedule anything out for a couple of days, because I'm not sure if I can get you, you the money to do that part of it.
Well, no, the, the money's gonna be there as soon as we have the public hearing, but that would...
Unless...
I'm still not gonna ask them to do it, until it's there, for sure.
Just a technicality.
We just call it, call...
I can have them do the work, and you guys can pay them later.
Well, I was just thinking, just have that portion, have them do that at the end.
It may be easier for them to get that...
They're gonna invoice it, right?
They'll, yeah, they'll do the work, and we can invoice it, and we can give them the money, get them the money when you guys have a public...
We can't pay them later. You have to have a public hearing prior to the work being done.
Prior to the work being done.
Call, that's why we're doing this now, because we used to do it that way, and I'm not going back to the way it was in the past.
Okay, so we get a public hearing sooner rather than later.
Just, just post a school board meeting for the same night of the withdrawal committee meeting, and we'll have a quick one, and it can just have a...
Is that in enough time?
Absolutely, 30 minutes.
No, 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 if he's here on the 6th, two days in, I mean, what if that's his first project he has planned to do?
He'll work with us on that.
He will.
Okay.
And what time is the public hearing gonna be posted for?
5:30.
I don't think you're gonna need it, oh, yeah, I don't think you're gonna need that much time.
About 4:50.
Well, they might have mad crowd.
Like you always.
So, is it, did we just move the question, that we approve it?
We can't, because we have to do the public hearing.
Pending the public hearing.
Well, the motion was to pending.
Pending the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to, um, expend $3,500 out of the capital reserve fund pending a public hearing on July 8th at 5:30.
I'll second that motion.
To fix the leak.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did we cover everything you need?
I don't know, I'm confused now.
No, we're not gonna... We just created a consensus, but we don't need the fence, so do you wanna do a whole fence? No? Okay, then we can move on.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Could, could I make a motion to have the chair send the Florida Selectmen a thank you note for waiving that first time? I mean, I, I think it's great when the town and the school works together, and I think it's even better when we acknowledge each other's help, so I'd like to make a motion to send the Florida Selectmen to the panel to...
A thank you note?
Thank you note, sign it with the chair, if that's all right.
Well, that was the waiving of the...
Waiving what?
The disposal? Okay. Okay. Do we need a motion? I can do that. Send them a, is a card okay? Thank you card, is it okay, yeah?
Candy.
We're not getting candy, I promise. All right, JK8A policy, use of child restraints and seclusion, Ann.
So, we took the language out of the end page, in the second page of the policy, second to last paragraph, we took the language out, so it says, "Child restraint and seclusion shall be used only by trained personnel and only after other approaches to the control of behavior have been attempted and then unsuccessful." There are no other changes made to the policy?
Okay.
I just, I just don't think that seclusion could be used, period. I, I don't think it's, it's good psychologically for any child... I, I don't think it's, it's good psychologically for any child to be placed in seclusion, and I just don't, I, I totally disagree with it, and I don't believe it should, it should be done, and therefore, it shouldn't belong in the policy.
So, the policy, if you notice, it speaks to involuntary seclusion, and this, this law is written for public and private special ed schools, and it, I can't imagine a time when there would be involuntary seclusion in this school. But it does define what seclusion is not, because there are often times where a child will want to take a break, and go out and go into a room, and this gives clearer definition as to what that is. But this policy is following the law, so taking seclusion out could be...
But a child voluntarily doing that is one thing.
Right.
It's totally different than having anyone, say, you, go in that room all by yourself.
I agree with you, you and I are in agreement about that.
That piece should not have an hour.
Who says it can't, if the policy says involuntary seclusion, we cannot allow that, meaning if they don't want to go in that room, we can't put them in that room. That's what the policy's saying, is we're not going to do that, we're not allowed to do that.
Bonnie?
I make a motion to approve JKAA as amended.
I second that. What is that, thank God, Steve?
I don't think, I, I would agree with your interpretation of that name. It, it's, it goes, which the particular child is unable to exit. It still allows for a child to be placed in seclusion, as long as there is a, a way for the child to exit. What I'm saying is, I don't believe, if a child wants to do it on their own, that's one thing, but I don't believe anyone should put any child in seclusion whatsoever, period, whether they can get out of the, even when they can get out of the room. I don't think it's good psychologically for any child. That's the problem I, but, so, I would totally, I would have to disagree with your...
No question? Okay. But there was a question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Bus sale bids.
Castle has added information, see, Thanksgiving last evening, or there was news, last evening.
Oh, sorry. Seclusion, seclusion will be for the painting of the...
I kind of like seclusion, I don't know.
They don't have any information on the client, maybe there's no sense there. It would be much better if they had the information, should we just put them on the board meeting? Not for you. About a client?
Give anyone, give any eyes to give them up, give them up for...
Right, but I don't know, the project, it's going to be kind of, uh, follow along.
The bids we got were for six hundred and thirteen dollars and one thousand and ten dollars, and accompanying it is, um, Tim Elsinger's recommendation to go with Viva Thousand, ten dollars, that was submitted by Mr. Fox.
Joe?
Just to highlight that the board did ask to see if we get some prices for salvaging that, because those prices are in there as well.
Make a motion to award the bid, Mr. Fox.
Second that.
You're in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Looks like you got yourself scribbled, huh?
Hey, nothing.
You can. Right, right, good idea.
No worries.
Any correspondence?
No, whatever, no, um, sure. Glad to be ready, they were thought maybe to update the board, but without the information, and it would have been better to maybe get the, the budget and all that, and we put it on the next agenda, or?
Yeah.
Do you want me to try to...
No, I'd rather have all the documentation in front of us, if you don't mind, can we put it on the next agenda?
Yeah, can we get...
Just, what do you guys think? Okay.
Can we get, um, I think you, you got a budget the other night, Bob, right? Just Bonnie and Norm need a budget?
I have some pieces of paper that might be good for the board to have, some of the stuff that I've written out, if you want me to take copies for everybody, Steve, I can.
All right, go.
Yeah, if you guys can give us all the information beforehand, that'd be awesome.
Well, a lot of it is a work in progress, but the some, some that would be good for you to see.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr....
Yes, Bonnie?
So, if you just give me that info, I'll put it in a packet for them, if anything you'd like.
Absolutely.
We'll make the copies.
Will do.
I don't mind if it's emailed, and you don't waste the paper either.
Yeah, we'll send yours.
Well, no, you can email it, I don't have a problem with that.
Just put the first part of it, I'll email to you.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. All right, so there's no correspondence?
Do you know what the UH strategy is, isn't it? That we're paying them all for...
We're paying for the services, because there's a lot of paperwork involved, and time, and energy, they need to gather more to get the UHs.
I didn't know we had to pay, and I thought that was a reserve, or something like that. I don't know, they're all paying for it, or...
So, you can just invoice this when we've done... No, no, we're here.
Thanks, Mary.
Well, what are we doing, what are we doing with, with this? If they can't, if, you need...
If he's going to take it, see if we have the information that we need to be able to...
I understand, but what happens if he does it, and we need to go to legal?
We'll discuss that if we're not meeting, let me do the research.
Do you want to make a motion tonight, pending?
Well, that's what I'm saying, because then that's going to, that'll delay that by two weeks, if they can't. But I'm, I'm, I mean, a, a quick call to the lawyer, because we had, we had the lawyer go over it and check into it before we bought it.
So, we need motion to do that, I, I mean, I'm agreeing with, agreeing with you, I don't want to hold this off any longer, Steve, so whatever you need to do to get it moving is what I think.
How many, Mr. Fox?
Mr. Fox?
I, I think, once we gain that information, we'll have that other, the other publicly noticed meeting of the school board on the eighth. Maybe we can also just slide that in on the wonderful update, and then make a decision at that point. Is that okay?
Well, that's still, that's still...
Go ahead, Mr....
Yeah, I don't, I wasn't planning on posting that as a regular school board meeting, I was planning on posting it as a public hearing, so we don't have an agenda to, it's just been a public hearing.
But if we need to meet, we can do it.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, wait a minute, don't, don't you have to post it, or a school board meeting, the whole, to have a public hearing?
Right, but I don't, I won't have an agenda, but if we want to add something to it...
Have an agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that still puts it off.
Right. It still puts it off, I mean, I just think, maybe we should...
One, oh, wait, I'm, I'm, so, one, two, that, that's still three weeks.
Yeah, maybe we should just take him, take a vote, and if we agree, he can do what, he can make the calls to legal to find out.
Well, I don't think we actually need them, because...
I don't think you need a vote to call.
But in case he does, Steve, we don't want to wait.
I think it could be cleared up pretty quickly, just by making a phone call.
Right.
I agree.
So...
So, we should probably just do that, make the...
I will make a motion, that after investigation of all the materials that we have, legal correspondence that we already have on, on the purchase of the property, and if you can't get anywhere from there, make a call and see what the attorney recommends, the vote for that.
All in favor?
I only have part of it, that you wrote a lot of.
Motion, I'm sure, after investigation and...
Look at the, the, all the materials that we received from White Mountain this evening, past information that we've already received from the attorney for the purchase, and if there's no resolution, then to call the attorney, to get the attorney's recommendation moving forward. I tried to make that show in a best, but I don't...
That's okay.
You didn't, you didn't. So, you have to call, call, call the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I seconded that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's your board, they didn't care.
Our, our board was going to use a title company, and your board decided to have the attorneys do the title search, so that should be, I'll be in the record.
Well, it should be all taken care of, like you said, it was, it was by warranty deed, so it should just be a formality or a technicality that...
I could...
The attorney could just take care of very easily, or somewhere, it's already taken care of somewhere, but... I know it won't be in the invoice, but hopefully, we'll get the state rate in ties, in style of time.
That question was asked. Quite a while ago.
An ongoing process, that we are getting the state, state rate.
I make a motion to approve the judge's decision.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I'm staying on this again.
Public comment? What is the total amount that the board's extending from surplus for facilities? What was the total?
Nothing's going on from the surplus.
Yes, it is. This isn't budgeted for, it's coming from surplus.
Are you talking about the business we took care of today?
The one we just did tonight?
Right, the facilities.
There was ten thousand, seven hundred dollars left on that line for those issues?
Exactly, for these issues?
Yes.
I thought these issues were not budgeted for.
These were facility needs.
Well, the...
Anybody facility needs.
The tables for the art room was on next year's budget, in fact, pad, so it was not budgeted for this year, so it's coming out of surplus. The curving is coming out of surplus. The leak you, you didn't budget for, so it's coming out of surplus, the sheds you didn't budget for, so it's coming out of surplus, so I just wonder what the total amount was that you're extending from surplus.
From what I understand, through the budget process, if you raise an appropriate X amount of money for a certain line on that budget, budget line issue, and the expenditure falls within the definitions of that particular line, you can expend the money on those issues on that particular line. The, the money is that they're asking to spend is not going to over, I'm not advocating dispending it, because, say, I'm not trying to advocate that, but I'm trying to say that that line had the money, these items may fall under what that line is identified as, and the purpose for that line, so therefore, these issues are being taken care of.
Those weren't budgeted for, they're coming out of surplus, simple as that, these aren't items that were budgeted for. They're coming out of surplus, and I still just want to know what the total was, right?
Ninety-eight, um, ninety-six, ninety-eight thirty-six, sounds right to me.
Yeah, I think it's ninety-two thirty-six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy?
I'm a little concerned that the school board won't get info or report about the withdrawal until July 15th. The withdrawal committee has been, had four meetings already, and by the time you have your next meeting, they will have five meetings.
The withdrawal committee has met, had four meetings already, and by the time you have your next meeting, they will have five meetings. I've attended all but one meeting, and feel that some of the big decisions they've made will certainly impact the whole school. The school board and the committee should have been in constant communication, since what one does does impact the other, and since you have two school, school board members, they could have generally come and put it on an agenda at each meeting of what was being discussed. Because some really big things have been discussed that really concern me.
And we have it on the next agenda, and we'll have all the information in front of us.
I just think that's a little bit too far in, since this committee has already been formed and met four times, this over here.
Thank you.
Can I clarify, no decisions have been made, we do not make decisions, what we do is recommend to the board.
I understand that.
So we've made no decisions, I just wanted Mrs. Johnson to understand, no decisions have been made.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I misspoke.
I believe you did, because the recommendation comes from the planning committee, and that goes as a warrant article, and then the voters will vote on that warrant article next month.
It goes to the board, you guys, we are a subcommittee of the board.
The withdrawal committee didn't.
Mr. Johnson?
The board does not have to approve the recommendation from the withdrawal committee, that is a standing committee that is put into place by the voters when they voted no on that article, it is not a standing subcommittee of the school board. You have, you have school board representatives on that committee, but that is not a standing subcommittee of the Wakefield School Board, and the board does not need to vote on the recommendation coming out of the withdrawal planning committee. The voters of the town vote on the recommendation that comes out of that planning committee.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I thought we were a subcommittee, I thought I was told we were a subcommittee of the board.
That's, by RSA one ninety-four.
That's fine.
But we still haven't made any decisions, Steve.
No, no, it's still a work in progress, and I, I offered to explain, explain it to them, but then they, they decided they'd rather have all the information, which it would be much easier to follow along.
Right, without a doubt.
And I don't have access to a copier right now, so I couldn't make copies for everybody.
I apologize, I misunderstood.
Bonnie?
Oh, you've been standing corrected.
I'm standing right up.
Well, thank you.
No problem.
You enjoyed that.
I think it would be a good idea if the withdrawal committee brings everything in front of the school board, and the school board has their decision-making process whether or not to recommend to the voters, you know, or not even recommend to the voters, but at least air their opinion on what the withdrawal committee comes up for, you know, I mean, there may be no support for what the withdrawal committee comes up with from the school board, and the voters should be able to know that.
But you need to, it's not a withdrawal committee, withdrawal committee was the last time, it's a planning committee this time.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
Can I just make, can we maybe just briefly decide that until the end of this process, every meeting we get an update? And the next meeting can be from the get-go, that we could just get updated on what's going on? Can we just put that as a longstanding agenda right on?
Does that work, guys?
That's, I don't think you can motion to make any consensus.
That works.
Do you have consensus, do you have consent, Mike?
How about you, Steve? You are, I guess? True.
I don't know. I should have more questions.
Do you have more questions?
I don't, I'm just looking a little in the corner.
I have a comment, um, we should go to non-public.
I make a motion to go into non-public, calling RSA ninety-one, A, seven, four, three, two, C, seclusion requests.
I've got BNI.
RSA three, nine.
Go three, nine, non-one. Sorry, I make a motion to go into RSA, non-public pursuant to RSA ninety-one, A, seven, four, three, two, BNI. Don't look on last time's agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Bob, that.
Brown, yes.
Troy, aye.
Gonna be quick.
Just say something.
You can.
I just took a walk outside, and that end of the building, all the curving is granite, which I would presume is probably the original, when the original school was built. Down the primary?
The original school had, right up to the side along.
Okay, well, okay, then how old would that, is that curving a lot older than the concrete that's there, out front there? Anyways, that curb, I, which I, I assumed it was there longer, that granite curbing is, I mean, it's got some rubs from the plow, but it's in very good condition, and looking at the con, I don't know whether, do, maybe if we're gonna do it, you oughta, we oughta just do it right, and, and do it curved, I, granite, rather, and be done, it was falling off.
Well, the thing about that approach is, is gonna be less lineal footage, because I think Joe Steele is, what did he say? He was running it up to the granite, speaking of granite along?
He was running up to.
Okay.
But maybe, I mean, if that granite's not even, I mean, the concrete's not even twenty years old, we're gonna spend forty-five hundred dollars, and then, in another fifteen years, we're gonna, if we, I don't know, how, do you know how much it would, granite would cost, even if you can't get it for free? How much would thirty-three piece of granite cost?
Well, then we go along.
Yeah, it's gonna cost maybe eighteen to twenty dollars a piece.
Would it be worth doing it right the first time, instead of do, I, I just looking at it, the concrete is falling apart, it's totally...
Let's see if we can get the granite.
Yep, we'll see what we can do first.
We'll take that under advisement, Steve.
Do you want me to move to the table?
Did we make a motion?
I made a motion for adjourned, no one seconded that.
Bob seconded.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.